Like the call to order PBD Planning Board meeting held at 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Massachusetts. Agenda for Thursday, July 18, 2024, held at 7:00 PM, PBD City Hall, Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Massachusetts. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of 6/6 of 2024 and 6/20 of 2024.
In separate motions, Mr. Chairman, first I move that the board approve the minutes of the meeting of June 6, 2024.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tholz.
All those in favor? You have accepted one question.
And I'll also move now to approve the minutes of June 20, 2024.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tholz. All those in favor? In favor, one question.
Item on the agenda is A&R Land Court. First A&R is 74 Glenway Avenue parcel identification 115 to dash 272. Applicant Attorney John R. Kelty of 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. Owner Joyce A. Nelson and Kenneth A. Nelson of 74 Glenway Avenue, PBD. Plan to combine Lot B with the land of Almeida to form a continuous parcel. Land at 74 Glenway Avenue adjacent to property at 11 Glenway Avenue. Lot A has area and frontage accordance with our one zoning district. To review plans corresponding documents for this agenda, please contact Andrew Levine PBD at andrewlevine@pbdmas.gov.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. And I represent the Nelsens with respect to the presentation of this approval not required plan to the planning board. We have affixed to the application a copy of the variance. I made application before the variance became certified and the appeal period had passed. I have recorded the variance and tomorrow if the board is to sign the plan, the plan will get recorded. I would give Michelle a certified copy of the variance for your records so that you know there was no appeal having been taken. This is, this began several months ago, almost seven months ago, as an encroachment issue where my clients determined that the area that is shown on that plan as Lot B was being occupied and certain outdoor recreational facilities were being built such as a grill was made out of stone. Be that as it may, my clients have now, and not because of this issue, but have for other reasons determined to sell their home and actually tonight as we speak they're in South Carolina and about, if I close tomorrow, they're about to buy a unit down in the South Carolina. So with the affixing of the signature of the planning board on this plan, we will be able to convey Lot B to the Almedas who are next door and resolve the encroachment issue. And then Lot A, being 10,864 square feet, will be described in a deed to the newly proposed owners of the property. And I am hopeful that that closing will take place tomorrow. Happy to answer any other questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of an A&R plan of land in PBD, Mass. at 74 Glenway Avenue, prepared by Eastern Land Survey, prepared for Keith and Joyce Nelson. Plan is further identified by number F 7690. Lot B containing 1,926 plus or minus square feet shall be combined with land of Janet Almeida to form one contiguous parcel. It's removed.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Joseph Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Attorney Peter Arvenites?
Yes.
Dr. Judith Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Genzali?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Feld?
Yes.
Mr. Sean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tom French?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas Bettencourt.
53 to 081. Applicant Sabino Farm Road LLC of One Apple Road, Beverly, Mass. Owner, New England Power Company, 170 Data Drive, Walthing, Mass. Applicant is seeking to split current lot, creating two lots, property located in IL Light Industry Zoning District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, my name is John R. Kelty. I'm an attorney. I practice law at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. This is a application with the applicant being New England Power Company. My client is, I'm sorry, the owner of the property is New England Power Company. My client, Sabino Farm Road LLC, is the applicant. That is a LLC owned and operated by the Missis family. The Missis family does own other property adjacent to this parcel of land. Lot A will hopefully be, will be conveyed to Sabino Farm Road LLC and will add to the area which is adjacent to property which is owned by my clients as the North Shore Vault. That is the enterprise that's adjacent to this. So with the signature of the planning board on this plan, that conveyance will take place. Lot A will be, will be provided to, in the form of a deed to Sabino Farm Road LLC and the remaining land, which is shown as remaining land, will continue to be owned by New England Power, which is now doing business as National Grid. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Missis is here this evening if you have questions for him individually.
Any questions from the board? Dr. Otto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the remaining lot, is that an easement that runs along the, let's see, east side of the property to allow access to the remaining piece?
We had originally drawn this plan to provide an 18-foot right-of-way along this Lot A as access. However, the, the grid has elected for us to remove that access and they would continue to utilize their current access, which is along that easement that's on the bottom. And we have added actually a note at the, at the suggestion of the grid, which says that National Grid retains existing access rights over the, over the property of 75 Rea North Central Street Realty Trust. And we were happy with that change and it really doesn't change their rights in any way.
Any other questions from the board?
Attorney Kelty, who is Lot A going to?
My clients have created an entity called Sabino Farm Road Realty Trust and it will go to them. I'm sorry, I said Realty Trust. Sabino Farm Road LLC.
It's not being combined with another parcel, it's just change of ownership?
At, at the moment, it will be as it is. That's correct.
Change of ownership?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, an A&R plan of land in PBD, Mass., prepared by Hayes Engineering out of Salem, I'm sorry, Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass., prepared for New England Power Company and Sabino Farm Road LLC. The date on this plan is June 13, 2024. Lot A, 150,167 square feet, 3.4474 acres, shall now be transferred to Sabino Farm Road LLC.
We have a second? Second. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Joseph Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Attorney Peter Arvenites?
Yes.
Dr. Judith Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Genzali?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Feld?
Yes.
Mr. Sean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tom French?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas Bettencourt?
Motion carries.
map 57, Lot 74T, continued from 6/20/2024.
Mr. Chairman, before Attorney Kelty here presents on behalf of his client, I have drafted up and have brought hard copies here with me this evening and submitted an email copy as well to Attorney Kelty prior to this meeting. It is a memo put together from the Community Development Department. It outlines the conditions that were found as part of, or recommended as part of separate peer reviews as well as recommended from Robert Langley. Robert Langley is retired during this, so that's why this memo is coming from me rather than Department of Engineering. But I have, stormwater was all set a little bit ago, but traffic was still out. And then we do not have a final word back yet on sewer or water, but the applicants are here this evening to explain the impacts on that and answer any questions. But I have a memo here if the board wishes to accept it as a laid out this evening.
Once again, John Kelty, 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Massachusetts. And as Andrew has stated, there did appear to be a couple of outstanding issues on this matter. We were able to get a little bit of a late closeout from, we had a July 5 memorandum regarding traffic and we were able to respond to that and get a closeout memorandum from Time Bond, who is now our traffic consultant. Time Bond acquired the company which was formerly World Depot. And so that's been closed out. Andrew has taken from the several memorandums that were produced over the last few months and placed them together. We were chasing Leah Stanton, who is consultant with Weston and Sampson. They were reviewing the issue of water as to whether there is availability of water on the site. I believe that they did respond. I was unable to find it, but they, they provided peer review for Tremel Crow, which is the 40B that is located right behind this parcel of land. And there was more than adequate water available for that project. They previously had provided us with memorandums stating that there was adequate water supplies for the assisted, I'm sorry, the age-restricted community we had proposed for this, but was not approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we're confident that there is sufficient water availability. That would certainly be another issue that would need to be addressed as building permit were to issue or excavation permits. And I believe that in addition to the items that Andrew has provided, I think it's understood that no, this particular parcel of land has got a lot of outstanding taxes. And we have, Mr. Caruso is here this evening. We've agreed in principle with an approval to be able to make tax payments on or before July 31st. And as such, we would ask that if you would like, you certainly could add a provision that no building permit be issued until such time as taxes were paid. And with that, I would ask that this board approve this particular site plan under the, under the provisions of site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, in your packets you would have seen, it was digitally, but we have, I believe we had the hard copies, but we have 11x17s of the new plans that incorporates many of the peer review comments. I have it here too that I can share on the screen. I was just hoping that Attorney Kelty or the project engineer might be able to go over just exactly what has changed on these new set of plans that were filed, rather than what was originally filed. And just to further what Attorney Kelty had mentioned, I did speak with Rod Emery this afternoon, who is the peer reviewer engineer for the city from Time Bond, who did traffic. And he did mention that they were all set, that they had answered all his questions and provided him the information that he was seeking. So that's actually the traffic condition that was put in there has already been done as shown on these plans. So that's already been done.
I do have project engineer here this evening if you'd like to hear from him. Do we?
Eric Bradnese? Yes. Good evening. Name's Eric Bradnese, Engineering Alliance, 194 Central Street in Saugus, where the civil engineers for the project. The, the traffic comments that we had received were relative to the site layout plan and then one of the detail sheets on here. So there were a couple of items that we were asked to address. One you can see pretty clearly, we were asked to put the directional arrows in the driveway areas. So just to show that there's two-way circulation everywhere throughout the project site, that was a comment. There was another comment about updating signage locations. So we had to show the location of a stop sign and locations of handicap accessible parking. And then there were a couple of other items that were addressed. They were located in the access roadway. There are two proposed wheelchair ramps that are noted at the crosswalk just outside the access to the property. So we added those proposed wheelchair ramps in and then we added and removed a stop bar there. So yeah, actually where we're zooming in here. So as you can see, there's an R dash, R1 dash one sign and a stop bar just outside the access to our property that used to be north of, on the sheet here, shown on the access to the Tremel Crow property in the rear. The peer review engineer had asked us to move those there and add the wheelchair ramps in. And then the final comment they had, we had a double yellow center line that ran the length of the access road to our property. They asked us to cut it just in that intersection there. So they were very minor comments. The plan changes were made. And then on sheet, I believe it's D1, we added the wheelchair ramp details for, for the construction, but they were very minor comments that were all addressed.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive a late communication from Community Development in regards to Zero Newberry Street. There are nine bullet points, stormwater, traffic, and sewer. Just moved to receive.
Second.
All those in favor? Hearing no other further questions, I'll accept. I have a, I have a question, but not for the civil engineer. So as far as the taxes, the real estate taxes, it's going to be paid in full before the billing permit is issued?
Yes.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
Yes.
Because I'm not interested in moving forward on this at all unless this is paid a hundred percent and not 99%, a hundred percent. This has been long overdue and it's ridiculous that it's gone this far. And they need to step up and make it right and I hope they do that soon. Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Just to compound what Joe said, making sure that it's the taxes, Jack, for all of the parcels where the maneuvering has occurred or is it just on this one that's seeking approval?
At the present time, this one parcel.
And who's responsible for the rest?
Pardon?
Who's responsible for the rest?
Mark Hazy, Richard Mark Hazy.
And do we know what that total is, Mr. Treasurer? Just curious how that break down between this parcel and all the rest.
All right, so.
I know, this is how it has to work out. Their city treasurer, Mr. Teddubom, is here that can provide information in regards to the taxes if you would wish to allow him to speak.
Thank you. So as of today, that, that back parcel is $680,221.52 with a per diem of 20521. The current taxes that's owed for that parcel as well is $15,006.38. That current taxes is due on 8/1.
Yes, Mr. Gagnon? Question for the Treasurer. So what's the total amount that they owe, total?
So for that property?
Yeah.
$695,227.90 as of today with a $205.21 per diem. So every day it goes up by $205.21.
Okay, and the applicant is, is agreeable in front of this board to pay that in full? Is that correct before the permit issues?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant has, has said yes, so I just want that for the record.
Just to clarify, the applicant has no ability to receive a building permit until they pay up taxes. So irregardless of what the planning board can do here, there's no building permit to issue until taxes are paid up. And they would have two years from this day to act on their building permit until they would have to come back in front of the board for the entire process all over again.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that, I understand the process. I know what the process is. But this needs to be said out loud so the, the, the community and the public can hear this, that this is unacceptable for this tax burden to be going on so long. And so I'm just making it known, of course, they're not going to get a permit unless they pay this. But the applicant needs to know that this board is not happy at all with the reluctance to pay in the future for whatever reason. Any other questions from the board?
The applicant as to this plan is Circle Storage LLC. Does Circle Storage LLC owe any other taxes to the city other than what's been mentioned tonight?
In the city?
To the city of PBD, yeah.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Ben Carter, if I just ask for, so I am looking at the proposal with the sidewalks. I, I know technically it's not on your property that the sidewalks or that crosswalk areas are being built, but that is being included as part of this project because as part of the Tremel Crow project, you are delivering the roadway for it and that is why those side, handicap ramps are shown on this plan.
Yes, can you do that?
The plan shows the.
Entryway, yeah.
Yep, it shows the handicap ramps that are not technically on the property, but these are being constructed because as part of the Tremel Crow project, the roadway was to be delivered to them for.
That, that's true, yes. Circle, actually, this applicant is responsible for that roadway, so.
Any other questions from the board? Someone here wishes to speak? Someone here wishes to speak?
Yeah, if you want to ask if anybody is.
Is there anyone from the city of Peabody that would like to speak on this issue?
So I'm just treasurer for us. So part of the issue is the construction of this road is not on this parcel. It is on a parcel that is additionally in tax title. So due to that, that is a whole nother part of it because they're now going into a separate parcel, which is in tax title. So the ramp that they're now having to work on, I think the two spots for the ramp for the road, for the handicap wheelchairs, are in a tax title zone right now. They're also in tax title for those two parcels as well.
Thank you. State your name, please, and your address.
Stanley Greglick, Huntington Wood, 4503 Deerfield Circle. I'm representing as an abutter from Huntington Wood. I also share some communication with other abutters, who may or may not be on the Zoom call. But I, back in March, when we first saw plans, when we first saw plans, I sent a document to the board with some concerns that we would have. We're not opposed to this development project at all, but we are concerned about certain things related to security and privacy and the environment, as it would affect Huntington Wood. If nothing has changed in the plans, then I guess I can review what I submitted in my letter document, if that's okay. There's several items in that. The first one related to security, I'm concerned about the storage facilities, operational hours. We want to make sure that it's within reason, and I'm presuming that the city of Peabody and the planning board have ordinances that may cover this type of thing for this type of business. But we would suggest operating hours between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM with separate, full access 24 hours for fire police and any other city resources that need to be involved with this location. I didn't see any main entrance gates or anything in the plans that I could discern. So that's a concern for all of us, for security and also for the businesses' customers as far as access. So I don't know if there's any, that's a question I have. If it's going to be an electronic gate controlled and monitored, as well as controlled by the access for the time periods that I was mentioning earlier. One of the bigger items that I'm concerned about, as an abutter from Huntington, is if you had the map, I think the previous one that showed the outer perimeter and so forth, it's designated, this was related to security again, it's designated to have ornamental trees surround the entire property. I consider that inadequate for the safety and security of not only Huntington Wood, but there's a 180-unit complex going in next door to this. That's already in progress. That's a lot of people, that's, you know, 180 units. I don't know how many are two-bedroom, three-bedroom, one-bedroom, but it's a lot of people. And we have a lot of other types of people that will be in that facility that could traverse this property. We have a lot of wildlife on Huntington Wood that travels through these woods. We could present evidence if that's needed because we have, you know, alerts in some of our property of certain types of animals, especially coyotes and so on. But there's a lot of wildlife that's in that area. There's a pond, a couple of ponds, Pierce Pond in our property, that's very close to this area. And we're very concerned about access for both humans and wildlife. So my suggestion is that I would like to see if it's possible that the owner would consider a chain link fence around the property, particularly at least for two-thirds, that would cover a horseshoe around half of the property, starting where the retention, I think it's a water retention com deck unit is, all the way around the other side, just past Peterson, at least that much, so that you wouldn't have all these people traversing into the property and on into Huntington Wood as well. Because, I mean, a storage facility that isn't manned 24 hours is going to have a situation of people from that 180-unit and visitors and everyone else possibly dumping things, and that's some of the other questions. I don't know what their trash and other related storage is going to be. That's not in the plan. But that could be a real problem with a unit that's right behind it and that many people going into this area. So security is very important to us at Huntington. This is a major thing for us, I think. I presume that nature of the business, they're going to have security cameras at different areas, so. But I just wanted to make sure there were some cameras that might be pointed toward the Huntington Wood direction in case people come in there, maybe that are unauthorized or not customers. One of the other areas I'm concerned about is, I don't know what ordinances you would have for this type of business in the city of Peabody, but certainly we'd be concerned about chemicals, hazardous waste, ammunition, explosives, you know, things that are just not common storage items for, you know, natural storage, for a storage facility. So I'm hoping that there are some ordinances and some things that the business owner themselves would want to protect their interests and not have certain dangerous materials, and including vehicles, types of vehicles. And I'm not sure if registered versus non-registered vehicles, parking, if there is vehicle storage access in this facility, if that's a concern as well. As far as parking, on the original plan, there was only 13 spaces, two for handicap. I'm assuming that's for staff. I believe that customers would park in front of their own storage units when appropriate, but I'm not sure if there needs to be other parking. I didn't notice any fire lanes or anything like that in the drawings. That's probably something that needs to be added and put together. As far as health and safety, I know that they have requirements to handle pest management and rodents. With all the disturbing going on with the 180-unit that's in construction now and in this one, there's going to be a lot of movement of certainly rodents and a lot of other types of.
Sir, please keep your comments that this development has nothing. Please keep your comments that this development, not the 180-unit.
Okay, well, the 180-unit has an impact on it. All right. So the other, another area concerned about is the trash, you know, how they're going to handle trash. None of that's been designated in the drawings, whether there's going to be internal or external dumpsters and so on, so that we can be assured that there's no dumping of trash by customers or whatever from the unit and from the outside. The last thing I think I wanted to go over was about the, for the environment, was snow, storage and plowing. In this diagram, they did a very good job of picking some areas for snow plowing and storage. I agree with, but there's no indication that those areas where the snow would be dumped on the diagram are pervious or impervious. So it looks like it's in the grassy area that's around it. And so for the snow storage and plowing, I would hope that that's going to be, that area that's designated on one of the diagrams has impervious material, stone, something that's other than the grass, where the snow and chemicals are being dumped and stored, until there's too much. And I know there's a requirement for them to remove it after there's a certain excess in all of the tree storage areas. I believe that's about all that I can say. We would welcome, you know, a development that's reasonable, has less impact on infrastructure, sewer, water, electrical, you know, and if we keep it to within reasonable operating hours, I think Huntington Wood will be very happy with that neighbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This, all this information was submitted in writing prior to the city. I'm quite sure that the city will go over this and make sure that your comments are noted in all the boards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Kelty, could you just address fences, gates, security cameras, please?
These are, there seems to be a little confusion. These are not storage units. These are contractors' bays. We have provided dumpsters on our plan. We also had to provide for Rod Emery turning radii so that a piece of equipment as large as would be needed to pick up the dumpsters would be able to make all the turns. Yes, there will be cameras, but it's, you know, these, and the cameras, we can certainly monitor our perimeter. And I think that's, if you'd like to hear any more about what's on the plan versus, but I think there seems to be a little confusion about what our final use is.
No, I realize the difference in use, and I found the landscaping page, plenty of trees for buffers, and I couldn't pick out a fence if there was a fence on here anywhere. That's why I asked the question. No fence, at this time, no fence.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just also would point out, there is quite a steep grade change going down towards the property as well that they're proposing.
At the, at the southerly end of our property to Huntington Wood, yes, it's a significant grade change.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
So the way I understand it is, according to the treasurer, is that the shared roadway access is in tax title. And let me clarify, tax title. This isn't, you know, they're not behind taxes like for three months. This is many, many years. And personally, on the board here, the way I feel is any part of this project, whether it's owned by the applicant or it's shared, you know, the shared street by another abutter, if there's any tax lien, any tax title issue, I'm not in favor of moving anything forward until everybody that's involved with this, anybody that's involved to make this project happen, if they haven't paid their taxes, and that includes the abutter that's in tax title, if they're not paid in full, I'm not willing to move forward on this at all. I think it's a disgrace how many years that this has gone by. It's a blatant refusal to pay taxes. And I know this, it's a very complicated situation up there, but let's face it, we all have to pay our real estate taxes, big and small, it doesn't matter. So I'm not in favor of this at all until all the taxes are paid by everyone involved to make this project happen.
Any comment, Mr. Kelty?
I have, no, I think that Joe made a statement, and I don't have a particular comment.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move recommend permit to issue with the condition that no permit shall issue until such time as all municipal taxes with interest and penalties due to the city of Peabody are paid in full. Further, in this conditional approval, this project cannot be sold, transferred, traded, swapped, bought, bequeathed to any other person, any other company, any other corporation, contractor, builder, developer or entity until such time as all municipal taxes and penalties and interest are paid in full. Further conditions laid out in a memo from Mr. Levin, Community Development, dated July 18th. There are nine points dealing with stormwater traffic and sewer, and these shall now become compulsory conditions. So moved.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, Mr. Chairman? Point of clarification. Mr. Ford indicated that all taxes will be paid prior to building permit being issued. You're only talking about the taxes of this applicant, not the abutter who shares the road that's in tax lien. Is that correct? Okay.
I'll accept the second.
Second.
Dr. Otto, second, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Joseph Gagnon?
No.
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Attorney Peter Arvenites?
Yes.
Dr. Judith Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Genzali?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Feld? Mr. Sean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tom French?
No.
Mr. Thomas Betancourt? Seven to two.
Motion passed, seven to two, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 15 Newbury Street.
Mr. Chairman, there should have been a letter in the board's packets in regards to this, seeking a continuance to the August 1st meeting. I, again, will be looking to put together probably a very similar document to what you received this evening outlining the peer review comments on that one. I did speak with Rod Emery, who is the traffic engineer, who is reviewing this project for the city today, as I mentioned. He mentioned they were pretty much all good on his end and that he'd probably be, I don't even actually think he'll be providing something because they seem to be pretty all set at this point. But I will update the board for the next meeting. But there should be a continuance letter in your packets.
Mr. Chairman, move to receive a communication from GPI, that would be Greeman Peterson, Inc., dated July 9th, 2024, in regards to 15 Newbury Street, requesting an extension of time until August, the August 1st meeting. Move to receive communication and grant said extension.
Second.
Any represent, comments on correspondence? Hearing none, any matters probably before the board. Dr. Otto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, on the matter of potential revisions to the subdivision rules and regulations, which we had talked about several meetings back, I would like to see if we can work a lot of time to meet the subcommittee and begin this work. In the past, it's been okay for people to meet in the hour before this board meets, so that would be 6 o'clock on August 1st. So I guess I would put it to Mr. Ford and Mr. French as to whether that would work. Great. Super. I will put together some notes for this so we can get off on a rolling start when we meet that day. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Otto. Any other matters before the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, if you remember at the last meeting, the matter of 18 Corel Road was brought before the board. This was a subdivision that was approved back in 2007, and then as part of it, one lot was released, which was not technically part of the subdivision. It's actually the same subdivision that was approved is where Tremwell Crowe's property is going today. 18 Corel Road was a outlier lot that was connected on the end. It was subsequently released in 2007. A foundation was built on the property. Fast forward to today, the owner of the lot is looking to build out and is in front of Concom. The issue that was brought up at the last meeting, and I can just show it on my screen really quickly here, is that, sorry, let me just pull it up. At the last meeting, it was discussed that the, you know, as the planning board provide a recommendation in regards to what would be built out there. And at the time, it was presented that a 42-foot section of roadway, meeting the rules and regs of the planning board, be built that then would transition into a private driveway. We, since our planning board meeting, had a meeting of the ward counselor, the director of public services, the conservation commission, president and conservation agent, myself, city solicitor, and attorney Kelty, as well as his client and the engineer. At that meeting, it was determined that if a 42-section foot of road, or 42-foot section of roadway was to be built, that would require a 14-foot retaining wall at the end of that area and reduce the size and where snow could be pushed, as snow is currently just pushed right up to the end of the lot. At that meeting, we discussed alternatives, one of which would be just building a private driveway, starting at that 42-foot, going over the private right-of-way, or going over the city's right-of-way and then accessing this lot. Engineering, Department of Public Services was okay with this, conservation was okay with this, the ward counselor was okay with this, and the applicant was okay with this as well. There would just need to be some sort of licensing agreement drafted up that the applicant would now be using the city right-of-way as a private driveway. I asked attorney Kelty just to come back this evening, just because this is a complete switch from what was originally recommended by the planning board, just to give a quick update. But I think I got just about everything there, and attorney Kelty or myself are here to answer questions. Again, this is a conservation commission project, that's why it's in front of them. And originally, they'd just come to us for a recommendation on the roadway to ensure that it be built out correctly, but since then, we've determined that that might not be the best way to go.
So in summary, yes, everything that Andrew has stated is true. The section that was going to be 40-odd feet wide and fully paved is now going to go down to 14 feet so that we can remove the necessity to create a wall on that right side where you see the riprap slope notation. We are, I've drafted and will have reviewed by the city solicitor, a license agreement which would allow us to utilize the publicly owned section of, which is now going to be narrowed, and would allow us to, to tie into the water and sewer service, which would be, which is indicated on the plan. I also need to complete drafting a conservation easement, which would be over everything to the left of this entry roadway. That, on the original plan, said conservation easement over there to the left, yep. And it was never granted, this project had never moved forward. And so at this time, when we appear before the conservation commission on the 31st, they will have drafted, we will have drafted the license and the conservation easement for review by the city solicitor. So I think that we're in a position to move this matter forward, hopefully on the 31st. And we're asking the planning board's comment on whether they are opposed to the narrowing of the roadway from the end of the fully paved Corel Road. There are two reasons that it would be better, seemingly better, to be narrower right from the end of the pavement. And one is impact on wetlands, and the second is the necessity to create a wall which would be on other, other property, or that wall would be located in the public layout and as such would require the city to maintain it. So this limits maintenance, limits impact on the wetland, and I'm happy to answer other questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Attorney Kelty, on the construction of your, your 14-foot road, will, will that be to today's standards, just narrower? Will it have curbing, catch basins?
Yes, we need to, yes, there will be catch basins. Curbing, I believe, is only on one side. Actually, he doesn't show curbing, so the curbing would end at the existing pavement, and then we show, as a matter of fact, proposed curb stop. So we're not proposing curbing for that 42 feet or curbing within the privately owned area. The water and sewer are within the layout and, I think I answered your question.
It's less a roadway and it's a driveway.
Now, that, that runs downhill towards the rest of Corel Road?
Yes.
So perhaps a couple of catch basins to pick up a little?
We're collecting everything on our property. We've a series of infiltrators and there's a large dry well at the back of the house. Our effort is to collect everything on our lot, and the only unattended portion would be that 40 or so feet in which it is our intention to swale the edge such that the water would not run directly into the wetland and would, but because it's going that way, we can't collect it on our land in that section. And we've had discussions with the public services and ward counselor about whether or not the drains that are actually on Corel Road are tied into anything in whether they work or whether there's some cleaning that need be done. We had offered to clean if it's found that that's all that needs to be done, would be happy to do that. But the tie-in, our area to the existing system is some 500 feet, so we're not proposing to actually tie catch basins in. Our runoff will be collected in a drip edge that's proposed for our driveway, and again, off of all the roof runoff, will be collected in the dry well at the rear of the premises.
Any other questions from the board?
Through the chair. Jack, I'm still just a little confused about the plan and how it ties in with the accepted roadway as well as the frontage of the abutters, if you will. Can you tell me where the accepted roadway stops, the city, the city's street?
The accepted roadway, in terms of what is Corel today and what is public, is right to our lot line. However, it's paved 42 feet short of our lot line. So our proposal, it was originally to bring 40-foot width, 50-foot layout, bring it forward, and then we've already indicated what some of the problems presented to the city for doing that would be. And it was determined that narrowing, it would be better for the neighborhood and better for the city in the sense that that wall, if constructed, would need to be maintained by the city and not by this developer.
Just a little confused about the transition between, so I see at the very top of the page, that's the, that's the wide roadway, and then the 42 feet that you're speaking of is when it gets narrow and heads down here. So that chunk that's shown on the screen, isn't that 42 feet across the frontage of the neighbor on the left and the right? How is this going to transition to their front yards and the front of their properties? Forgive me, but I've never been to this neighborhood. Somebody's going to have a riprap slope down to their front lawn? I'm confused.
No. If, if we had made it the 50-foot layout with the 40-foot pavement, that would have resulted in a, the driveway of the neighbor where that riprap is shown, that driveway is right there, yes. And...
The driveway today exists just about right here. I believe today there is some sort of kind of, it's an, like an uphill driveway that you drive to as well.
And the question is, the accepted roadway, I don't think, PBD has, in the last 40 or so years, had two major efforts at roadway acceptance. Most of that is done in conjunction with your chapter 90 reimbursements from the state and feds for all your roadways. So in general, the clerk identifies Corel Road certainly as an accepted and as a public way. Other communities do formal acceptances of roadways. PBD has not, except for in about 30-year period, they've twice accepted a large list. So it'd be my opinion that they have accepted Corel Road as it shows in that box, but that ends at our property line. So this resolution has virtually no impact on our neighbors, whereas the wider would have impacted them and created more impervious surface to run on to their properties. So we're decreasing the impervious surface, putting that gravel side drip edge like you would put around a house, we're putting it adjacent to the roadway.
So yeah, I guess I've seen Google Images now. I still don't understand the, the 42-foot strip.
It's 42 in length.
42 in length, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 14 feet wide.
42 feet, and we're proposing now 14 feet wide.
Agreed. That, that's going to be, you're calling it a driveway, but it's going to be in essence a paper street?
It's going to be a driveway that the city will have a license agreement by them to, it will be, the city is receiving a license agreement that they can put a driveway on the right-of-way, and that is what it will be. So for all intents and purposes, yes, I, well, actually, I don't, this is a legal question about if it's a public way or not, but it's gonna act as a one-house driveway.
But it's not their land, and it's, and it also...
And that's what the license is about.
That's the license agreement.
But it spans other people's frontage. It's not their, like, the lot lines go all the way to the, the end of the proposed 42-foot. When I look on the assessor's map, like, I'm...
Their, their frontage is, is what it is now, to the end of the...
No, their frontage doesn't stop at the driveways.
Well, no, the pavement stops, but the road actually continues.
Was supposed to continue further to the end of their properties.
That's a public right-of-way. That's, that's where their furniture is. It shouldn't affect their furniture at all.
It does. Okay.
Question for attorney Kelty. With the license agreement, will members of the public have any access to utilize that public space that, in that 42 feet, or will, you know, if I wanted to go and turn my car around in that 42-foot length of road, am I able to do that still or no?
Yes, the license agreement gives us the opportunity to utilize that 42-in-length section of public way, and to that extent too. The city in that license agreement is not giving up any public rights, or they're just giving us the permission to be on that section of land. Public could come, actually, the public can come right on to this lot. There's really nothing for the public to, you know, be discouraged from driving all the way down to this house.
And, and public safety, the fire department's happy fighting a fire at this property down that 14-foot?
Yeah, we're installing a hydrant, just outside.
But they get down there, they can't turn around, they can't maneuver, it's barely beyond the width of their truck, like...
They have not commented negatively on that issue.
Okay. There's no turnaround at the end of a cul-de-sac?
There isn't a turnaround now either.
Fair. But it's 42 feet wide, or 50 feet wide?
Just to, also, this was approved and released by the planning board. So back in 2008, they approved this subdivision and then subsequently released this lot at the same time, stating like, this lot, that's why there's a foundation built on it too.
They released this lot with a real roadway all the way?
They released this lot with just, if you read the approval, which was, had a condition on there, and I'm paraphrasing here, but it stated that it'd be a one-lot private driveway. So I originally think that they believed maybe this 42-foot long section might have been a roadway, but since then, with discussing Department of Public Services, the neighbors, and Conservation Commission, the 14-foot retaining wall was detrimental to that, to the point that everyone decided that a 42-foot long section of private driveway on this, sorry, driveway, through the use of, through a license agreement, was more beneficial.
And our planning board subdivision approval is good for 16 years?
So if you didn't act on it, they act, this lot was released. So it was released from the covenant as part of that. And actually, in the covenant, it states, Lot 14 should not, which is this lot, should not be encumbered by any conditions of the covenant. There's actually really no motion truly that's needed due to the fact that, I, I've really just invited attorney Kelty here because off-chance, two years from now, you're driving down Corel Road and you said, I can't believe there's a driveway there, they told us you was putting a roadway. I just figured it'd probably make sense for attorney Kelty to come back and just explain why it changed.
Attorney Kelty, in, in the future, this 14-foot roadway will be maintained by the city?
The, the new section, well, the section on our lot is maintained by us. The section from the 42 feet would actually be in the city's purview if the, it would be the city's responsibility.
Plowing snow is the city's job. If it needed to be repaved in 10 years, it would be the city's job. Correct?
That section, yes, not our driveway, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelty. Any other matters probably before the board? This time, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?